Good evening. Today is Thursday, January the 16th, 2025. This is the work session of the School Board of School Board Trustees of the School City of East Chicago. The time is 6:10. The place is the School City of East Chicago Administration Building, 1401 East 144th Street, East Chicago, Indiana, 46312. This is also being shown via livestream at www.ssec.k12.in.us. This is the meeting of the School Board and public for the purpose of conducting the school's corporation business and not to be considered a public community meeting. The first agenda, uh, first agenda item is Strategic Planning Proposal. Uh, Dr. Burney.
Good evening, trustees. Uh, thank you again, um, for allowing us the opportunity to share what we need to do to move the School City of East Chicago forward. As you are aware, we have, we do not currently have a strategic plan and the last strategic plan that we had was 2019. Um, and so in order to advance those goals, we have, um, joining us virtually is Dr. Gregory Hutchings, who is the CEO of Revolutionary Ed, and we're going to, um, view a presentation regarding his proposal for strategic planning for the School City of East Chicago. Dr. Hutchings.
And thank you, uh, Dr. Burney. Thank you, uh, Madam President, um, as well, and all of the board members. So I'm looking forward to sharing this information with you all. You know, first I just want to say I'm really excited about just the opportunity because, um, I know that Dr. Burney is a new superintendent, um, with you all, and this is a very opportune time for you to take, you know, your achievement to the next level. So I'm hoping to be able to, you know, to be a part of that work with you. So I'm going to share my screen so we can get right into the presentation. And, uh, what I'm hoping to be able to do is, you know, I have a few slides to go through. I can go through the full presentation and then open the floor for questions. Um, or I'm not really sure. What is your process typically when you all have presentations? Do you want to ask questions along the way or would you like me to go through the full presentation first?
I think that we'll go through the whole full presentation first.
Got it. Okay. Well, let's go ahead and get started. You know, first I want to just give a little bit of background around who we are here, uh, at Revolutionary Ed. Um, you know, Dr. Burney said I am the founder and CEO, but also I'm a former superintendent, um, of Alexandria City Public Schools, which is right outside of Washington DC in Alexandria, Virginia. And I was also superintendent in Shaker Heights, uh, City Schools right outside of Cleveland, um, Ohio. So I've had 10 years as superintendent, um, have loved that experience, um, but I have transitioned into doing, uh, my own, um, educational consulting firm, which is Revolutionary Ed. And I'm also a professor, um, at Howard University, so I teach aspiring, uh, superintendents now. But a part of Revolutionary Ed, just really quickly, just to give you some background before I get into the strategic planning process, is, you know, our mission is around truly empowering and supporting school systems so that you can have what we call true systemic transformational change. You know, we want to make sure that you're impacting your students in every single way, from socially, emotional, um, as well as in their academic learning needs. A part of our vision is that we truly want to completely dismantle systemic racism, uh, in education. We want to promote anti-racism, uh, through our cultural responsiveness, through our diversity, through our equity, um, within our schools. And we want to really support school systems so that every child, regardless of their race, regardless of their zip code, that their needs are being met. And then finally, we, uh, have our core values, which, which I like to call VIP. And it's all about vision, it's all about integrity, um, it's all about passion. And, uh, this is what we do for everything, uh, from our executive coaching to our professional learning, to our strategic planning, as well as to our board and superintendent relations, uh, services that we offer. But this is what we really stand by is that VIP, that vision, that integrity, and that impassion. This is just a group of our members. I'm not a one-person show. Um, I do have some consulting partners that work with me in regards to data analysis and, uh, focus groups and, uh, academic achievement, um, student relations, uh, and things of that nature. Uh, but we, you know, we're small but mighty. Um, you know, out of all of us, we have, you know, two, um, former superintendents, chief academic officer or chief accountability officer. Um, so there's a plethora of expertise, uh, that we have on our team that we'll be able to provide in regards to supports to you all through the process. I want to start with a quote, um, you know, I know, I hope that you all are familiar with the honorable, um, the late and great John Lewis. Uh, you know, there was a quote that he made, which really inspired me to write, uh, my book, which is called Getting Into Good Trouble at School. Um, but his quote was never ever be afraid to make some noise and to get into good trouble, uh, necessary trouble. And, you know, I think that if we're going to truly meet the needs of young people, uh, in America, we have to not be afraid to make some noise. You know, it has to be good trouble, of course. I'm not telling folks to go out and, and to do things that's going to cause you to get into some, some serious trouble. But that necessary trouble is needed, especially at times right now where many of our black and brown students, uh, in school systems across this nation are part of some of the most marginalized, uh, communities. So I always like to keep this in mind when we are doing, um, our strategic planning work in particular, but all of the services that we offer, we like to, you know, get into some good trouble. So I want to talk about the pro, the project goals for, uh, for this particular initiative. You know, the, the main piece is that we want to work with you all to develop what we call a culturally responsive equity-focused, um, strategic plan. That is customized, um, you know, for the, the, the school city, uh, of East, uh, Chicago. And just making sure that every single student's needs are in mind, right? We want to build capacity so that whatever this next strategic plan is, that it is sustainable improvement, so it's not a one-shot deal. Um, it is something that regardless of who's in the seat, regardless of who's in the classroom, regardless of the new students who you may have, you know, join or enter your school system, that we will continue to see those sustainable changes and improvements over time. And then we want to make sure that the curriculum and practices in those classrooms, um, that they are aligned. And that we're making sure they're aligned with that systemic equity throughout the way. This is the timeline, um, that we are proposing. You know, when I spoke with Dr. Burney, I know it sounded like a very aggressive timeline initially, said, you know, we got to have this done in June. And, you know, uh, you know, one thing that I know that's going to make this possible is, uh, I just want to say hats off to Dr. Burney for doing, uh, a hundred day plan and going out into the community and having a lot of those focus groups, um, and some of the, the data qualitative as well as quantitative data that you collected. Um, that is going to allow us to be able to really get through the full strategic planning process, um, you know, in a reasonable time, which I, I truly believe that we could have a final plan, uh, for the board to have approval so it can go into implementation beginning July 1. So, you know, we will need to move though, quickly, beginning like next month, uh, we'll need to hit the ground running. Um, but with the proposal, we're looking at January 25th, looking at a lot of the data that has already been collected, um, you know, from the superintendent, as well as some of the superintendent's search data that you all had from the board. Um, it's all very helpful and it's, you know, realistic information that's timely, uh, that we can use to really begin to conduct our needs assessment. Uh, next month, we want to begin to have some focus groups and I'm going to talk a little more about what those focus groups, um, can look like in a future slide. Uh, and then in March, we want to really start getting into defining, uh, the mission and the vision and the core values, uh, of, you know, of the school system, uh, with the Strategic Planning Committee. And then by April, we will be ready to start developing our areas of focus, um, and our strategic planning goals, as well as our theories of change, uh, which are going to be needed. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about each of these, um, and, and some of these future slides. Uh, but in May, we will be ready to validate and refine the strategic planning components and bringing that to the board, uh, so that we can get feedback, um, along the way, uh, so that by the time we get to June, we are presenting a final strategic plan for adoption, um, so that it can begin implementation, uh, July 1. So just quickly, I wanted to give a quick overview around, you know, what a comprehensive needs assessment is, right? I mean, it's all about making sure that we're collecting and analyzing data. And as I mentioned before, uh, Dr. Burney was able to collect a lot of this during his hundred day plan. Um, you all were able to get some of this during the superintendent's search. But we want to make sure that we're looking at state performance data and attendance data and state metrics and your discipline data, uh, doing an analysis of some of the curriculum, um, items that you all have and looking at your multi-tiered support systems that you may have in place, um, for, for students. These are all a part of the comprehensive needs assessment so we can get an idea of where you are as a school system and how you're meeting the needs of students currently and what are just some areas that we might be able, um, to, you know, to strengthen along the way. Just a quick overview in regards to the stakeholder engagement, um, which I'm sure you all are familiar with, um, especially hiring a new superintendent in the past year. Uh, but we want to do some targeted focus groups, uh, that have diverse representation, um, you know, from our student populations there to our staffing, um, at all different levels, as well as board member, um, groups, parent groups and family groups. Uh, but it's going to be really important for us to have some community engagement so that we're including all voices. You know, a lot of times, you know, you'll, you'll hear from the folks with the loudest voice and, um, it's going to be important to be very strategic and intentional around getting, you know, eh, different folks who may not come to board meetings or who may not send an email to the superintendent so that we're getting a clear understanding of what the community, uh, needs are. And then we want to make sure that we're establishing a strategic planning committee that has representation, um, from board members to teachers, you know, to our custodians, to a bus driver. We need to make sure we have support staff representing, represented on that strategic plan as well as student representation. But just having a very diverse, um, and inclusive strategic planning team so we can have that, uh, collaboration. We also want to have a full strategic planning, um, development process. And with Revolutionary Ed, we really like to focus on making sure you have a mission, a vision, core values, um, that there are areas of focus that are addressing some of the district challenges, um, that you all may be faced with so that we can develop measurable equity-focused goals as well as theories of change. And theories of change, if you all, um, are not familiar with them, uh, it is like an if-then statement. So it's telling you if we focus on specific areas, we're then talking about the specific outcomes we're expected to see so that there are no surprises. Um, that whoever comes and joins the organization, you know, as we go through these next five years, folks will understand specifically what you all want for your young people and what you're working towards and what decisions are being made for. Um, so being very explicit around that and that theory of change is going to help, uh, in that particular area. Then you want to make sure, um, that we have an implementation framework. So we will work with, uh, you know, Dr. Burney and the team as well as with the board on just having accountability structures. You know, a lot of times folks will develop a strategic plan and it might stay on a shelf, uh, and you don't actually get the bang for your buck, right? So we want to ensure that there are accountability systems, whether they're key performance indicators, metrics, um, develop, having a professional learning roadmap. So, you know, there may need to be some professional capacity that's going to have to be built, you know, in order for teachers to meet some of these needs. Uh, but making sure that we have structures in place, um, to do that and ways to monitor, um, the strategic plan along the way. Because as the next slide talks about, the monitoring and the evaluation component, um, is probably one of the most important pieces to the strategic plan. And what we will provide you all with is an action plan template so that, you know, you are able to develop specific action steps, knowing who is in charge of what, what is the timeframe, what is the metric that is going to measure how we have attained the particular goal, um, you know, the set forth in the strategic plan. So we really want to take a methodical and strategic approach, uh, in order for this to happen. And then finally, we're looking at, excuse me, finally, we're looking at our outcomes and our impact, you know? You know, over the period of time, the goal is that, you know, we're going to see improved student achievement, that there will be equity metrics in place, that we'll see stronger community partnerships, that will enhance leadership and instructional capacity throughout the school system. Uh, and we really believe that with, you know, the long-term goals, as well as the short-term goals, that will work collaboratively with you all to develop, um, that it will afford those anticipated results, uh, that, you know, that we believe not only you deserve, but our young people, uh, deserve to have. So finally, I just want to reiterate, you know, that vision, that integrity, that passion. You know, I do believe, uh, as we lead these efforts, especially, um, in regards to strategic planning, we're going to have to be visionary, thinking beyond today, right? If we continue to just focus on what we're doing right now, how are we going to foresee what students might need tomorrow? And we also want to have integrity throughout this process. You know, we want to live up to what we say we are going to do. Um, we want to make sure that things that are in the strategic plan are reasonable, um, that they are attainable, right? They can be ambitious, but they need to be attainable so we're not setting up the organization for failure. And then we want to have that passion, you know, and one thing that I say as an educator for 25 years now, um, I still wake up every day with a passion for education, right? I wouldn't do this job if I didn't love it. And it's hard to do this kind of work if you don't love it. I'm sure you all know that. Um, you, because it's tough. It's, it's hard being an educator, uh, but it's also one of the greatest gifts, I think, that we have in this world. So that vision, integrity, and passion is our landmark. So I'm going to stop here. Uh, I, I, I believe that you may have a copy of the full proposal. And if you do not, you know, I'm more than happy to share that with you all. Uh, but I want to open the floor for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, um, Mr. Hutchinson. Uh, now, uh, is, are there any questions from the board? I'll ask the first question. Uh, my question is, um, did I hear you say that as of January, you have already, uh, well, you will, you will be gathering all the data from our school system from, uh, Dr. Burney?
Yes. So, um, Dr. Burney, I know that he has already, um, started to develop his data from the, uh, hundred day, uh, plan that he had, as well as some of the data that you all already have from like the leadership profile that you did when you looked for a superintendent. So that's the kind of data that we already would have access to. So we'll begin to do an analysis of that now. Um, so that can get us ahead of the game for next month to, to begin meeting with our strategic planning team and focus groups.
I have a quick question. Um, has your organization worked, um, with school districts with a very high number of non-English speaking students?
Yes.
So could you share some of that experience?
Absolutely. So, uh, well, one, let me just tell you, I was superintendent in, uh, Alexandria City Public Schools and our largest population was Hispanic. Um, people were always shocked because Alexandria is known for our downtown, old town area where George Washington lived. And we're one of the richest communities, uh, in the state of Virginia. However, we are, well, we, I'm no longer superintendent now, but I'm, look, I'm a product of Alexandria. I'm still going to say we. Uh, but we had, 70% of our students were free and reduced meals. And, uh, 50% of our students were Hispanic. Uh, and it was a majority Hispanic, um, student population. And that required us to really have a very different lens. When we did our strategic plan, we had to have translators. Um, we had to make sure that materials were going to families in different languages. Um, we also had to ensure that there are different ways that you interact, um, with folks from different cultures, right? Everybody's not going to feel comfortable coming into a boardroom or going into a school. So we had to come up with some creative ways, uh, of getting students engaged. And one thing, we had a Ethiopian population, um, in Alexandria as well, and we had to work with the Ethiopian community to, um, to have them feel comfortable having conversations with us because a part of their culture was that you were not supposed to question educators. So they didn't feel comfortable answering a question that we may have asked. Um, so those are some of the things that we've done. But I worked, um, in, I, in the Isaac School District. It's outside of, uh, Phoenix, Arizona. Um, last year, uh, they are 100% Hispanic, uh, and 100% bilingual. Uh, I was surprised though, when I got hired for the job because I don't speak Spanish. Um, I have, I, you hablo español, opequito. Um, but I had to have a translator for some of the, uh, the focus sessions. Uh, but I was still able to connect, uh, with, with the group because it's all about building those relationships and at least trying. I knew how to speak and say hello and what's your name, right? Uh, but that was as far as I could go and I was honest with folks. I'm trying, but I can't go further than that. But those are some of the strategies that I've been able to use, uh, working in some of our non, um, English-speaking districts.
Utilizing those resources, would those, would those be included in the cost or is that an additional cost outside of?
Say that again?
If you have to resort to those resources where you have to, um, seek out translators for your, you know, your focus groups or whatnot, are those included in the cost? Or is that a separate cost outside of the contract?
So those are not included in our costs. Typically, I know when we worked in, um, in the Isaac School District, they had translators that already worked for their district. So that wasn't something that we provided, uh, for them. So that, that's not something we put into the cost. Um, I don't know if you all have translators that work with your division already.
Yes. Trustee Taylor, we will be using some of our sales, our community engagement liaison, as well as our bilingual family outreach coordinators.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Trustee, uh, Gomez.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. The, um, board member you just heard from is new to this role and, um, um, so for, um, for us as a board, uh, how do you, what, what, what is the board's role in this strategic plan?
One thing is that the board, I mean, this is one of the biggest jobs you all are going to do, is adopting the strategic plan. Because it literally is going to be your roadmap for the next five years. It may be around when your term is up, you know, for some board members, uh, who are, who are on the board. Um, so it is important that you all are a part of the process throughout. One thing that I strongly recommend when we're doing strategic planning work with districts is that we have one or two board, uh, members who are a part of the Strategic Planning Committee. Um, it's very difficult to have all board members just because of sunshine laws, right? You can't have all board members in the same space. Uh, but typically what I've, what I've seen is that it was, it's been the board, uh, president or designee and an additional, um, board member who is a part of the strategic planning team. They then, they are speaking on behalf of the board for one, but then they're also able to provide updates back, um, to the board, uh, throughout the experience. So, uh, I'm sure you all, I'm, I'm not sure how your board meetings run, uh, but typically sometimes boards, uh, board members are able to provide remarks or to give their updates. And, um, what I have seen that has worked really well is the board representatives, they provide kind of updates along the way. And the superintendent, of course, is providing updates too, uh, in collaboration with, uh, Revolutionary Ed. But I think school board, it is, this is one of your main priorities to kind of make sure that this is one, adopted. Um, two, holding the school system accountable and having those metrics, um, in place because then it will allow for the school board to use strategic planning goals to drive what the superintendent's evaluation looks like, right? And what a part of the implementation framework that we use is the strategic plan is kind of like at the top of, of, of the frame. And then that drives what the board's areas of focus are for the year. Because you try to do all five things, all, you know, all five years in one year, that's going to be a little overwhelming. So each year, board members will determine these are going to be our areas of focus, which will drive what the superintendent's areas of focus are, which will drive what his cabinet, which then drives what principals, which drives what students, which we hope in turn has an impact, a positive impact on what's happening in classrooms with students. Um, so that is a part of what the role of the board is, um, adopting the strategic plan as well as having an accountability structure to ensure that superintendent and staff, um, are fulfilling the obligations, um, of the plan.
I have a few, few more questions. This may be a two-parter here.
Yes.
Have you done strategic plans in the state of Indiana? If so, where? And how do you measure success?
So I haven't done a strategic plan. You, you all would be the first strategic plan in Indiana, but I've been in Illinois. Um, Home with Flossmore is not too far from you all, I believe. We just did their strategic plan last year, um, which was great with them. Uh, we've also been in Oak Park, um, Illinois, um, as well. And then we've been in Colonial Beach, Virginia. We've been in Isaac School District, uh, in Arizona. And then we're now currently in Birmingham, uh, Alabama and doing some work with them as well. Uh, but we haven't been in Indiana. That's, that's, this is going to be a new territory for us. But I was doing, um, you know, some of my background research and I didn't realize that, you know, at first I thought you all were in Illinois. Because it said East Chicago. Um, and then I was like, oh, well, they're, they're not in Illinois. And I was talking to someone, they're like, well, Indiana is, is right. Some people live in Illinois, but they work, um, in places like East Chicago. Uh, so I, I saw that there are some similarities. Um, however, the state, um, you know, objectives and the state requirements are different in Indiana than from Illinois. But we use all those, uh, things to kind of guide our work. And we also utilize the expertise of, you know, your staff, um, who are very, very familiar with the, the state standards. So I don't think it's going to be a problem that we haven't worked in Indiana before.
And, and that was.
Second part of your question, I think you said, you said something about how do we measure success?
Yeah. Yes.
So, um, in regards to strategic planning, we, we measure our success and ensuring you all are satisfied with what we're doing. And that it is not, you know, a lot of times, one thing that I do not do is I do not believe in creating a strategic plan that folks are not going to actually implement and believe in, right? And, uh, you know, I've prided ourselves on success when, one, the board is excited. when, one, the board is excited about the work and the staff are excited, people are well informed. Um, folks feel that their voices have been heard throughout the process. And it doesn't mean that you, that you can do everything that everybody wants. It's impossible to have a hundred percent satisfaction, right? But that people will know that their words were not just heard, but they were also put in action. And that they can see glimpses of themselves, uh, in, in the strategic planning process. And what I mean by that is ensuring that all students' needs are at the forefront when this plan is being developed and that we're having very courageous conversations around some of the challenges. You know, if you hide behind some of the challenges that you all are having, how are you truly going to solve them? Um, so a part of my success is making sure that we're being open and honest and, uh, and, and showing that every student, uh, needs are being met in the strategic planning that the board is, you know, satisfied with how we're moving forward and excited about it. But most importantly that, you know, the staff are too, because the staff are who have to do the work, right? You know, are born, unfortunately, you all have other jobs too, right? And this is an elected position for, for you all. Um, your role is not to go into classrooms teaching every day or supporting young people. So we wanna make sure that the staff is just as excited.
Yeah, I, I'd asked the original question about, uh, Indiana for that reason that you answered. Um, I, I just wanted to make a comment here at this point that I appreciate the, um, the overview. Um, there's a few of us on the board who have been at a number of conferences. During one of your remarks, you said, I wrote this down, Dr. Bornet and the board, uh, need to work on this together. Um, I, I really would like to explore other opportunities with, um, other groups so that we're picking the best of the best. Um, and so I just wanna put it out there that, um, I know there, the search group that we found Dr. Bornet in is, uh, one of those entities and there are others that I would like to explore, but I want, wanna thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
You have another question. Um, now, and you, you did say that you were gonna be working with the community and as well as our students.
Yes.
Uh, and this, they would be part of the strategic plan as well, right?
That is, that is correct. It's important to have the community involved.
Now, our community with our parents, uh, how do you go about, how did you go about getting them more involved in the plan? When you, when you get a strategic plan somewhere else, how was your plan with the, with the, with the parents? Getting them involved, well, you know?
Yes, but you know what? It really depends. And I can tell you this. So you'll have a group of parents who are, they'll, they show up at school every day, right? So they're the first ones who wanna talk, and sometimes those aren't the parents that we really need to hear from. So sometimes we really have to just do, we have to gauge the environment, right? We have to determine what is going to be the best way to reach some of our parents. Is it through, um, I've done in some districts where we've done Zoom, uh, cause some parents felt more comfortable doing a Zoom and it was at seven o'clock, seven o'clock at night, right? Um, we've had situations where we have done phone calls. We've also done community surveys. Um, we've had things where we, uh, one school district, they had their focus group timed, uh, after a concert. And, uh, so we were able to get parents right after their, their students' concert. We're just gonna have to determine what is gonna be the best strategy, you know, for, you know, for, for your community to get them out. But we gotta be creative. We cannot do the typical, hey, everybody show up at seven o'clock and we're gonna do, we're gonna have to really determine what is the best way to engage, um, our, our families, uh, in, in, you know, in the East Chicago community. So it'll vary, but those are just some examples of things we've done in the past.
And one more question for me. This is your team here that, uh, that's here? On a, on a, okay.
Madam President.
Yes. Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes, I do have a question as well. Um, Joe Rodriguez, uh, school board trustee.
Yes, how are you?
Good. So I guess my question is, given that the city of East Chicago is well diverse, as you know, some, sort of similar to Chicago but smaller. Um, we do have families that don't speak Spanish. So how would you engage in parents that are excited but the, if, but not seeing the necessary tools they need in order to respond? What would, how would you handle that?
Yeah, well, there's a number of things you can do. Some, uh, is we've had where we sent home, uh, and it's, we, we had to go old school in Colonial Beach because some of the families were not on the internet, right? So we did have to send, uh, surveys by paper, uh, to, to some of the families. And we actually got a response from that. Um, we had them in multiple languages. Uh, I know there they had, um, Haurik, um, Spanish and English. And, uh, we made it short, so it was, was like a one, you know, one sheet of paper, but it had two surveys on the front, one on the back in different languages. So it was just one sheet, we didn't have separate documents, cause then people will lose them if you do it that way. Uh, but we saw that we, we really had more families, um, turning in by pencil and paper, especially our families who did not speak, um, English or don't feel comfortable going onto a Zoom, uh, or going onto the internet, cause some may not have access, uh, to, to the internet. So we just have to find some creative ways of, you know, really gauging your community, having more conversations with, um, you know, your principals to see like what are some of the challenges, how are they interacting with their parents? And that will help us to determine the best way to communicate with the families. So it's no one size fits all. You really just have to customize and do what's best for each community.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions from the board? Okay, well, we wanna thank you, Dr. Gregory Hutchins, for your time.
Yes, I wanna thank you too.
Okay.
No more questions. Well, I wanted to say thank you, uh, you know, Madam President, eh, as well as, uh, the rest of, of the board members and Dr. Bornet. Um, I'm hoping to have an opportunity to work with you all. I think it's a really exciting opportunity. Uh, I've done the research, uh, with you all. I think it's timely. And, uh, we can do some really good collaborative work, you know, um, together. And please feel free to, you know, share any additional questions that may come up. I'll be more than happy to reply, um, to you all. Dr. Bornet, you know how to get in contact, uh, with me in regards to that. But I would love to work with you all and I look forward to hearing from you soon.
Thank you, Dr. Hutchings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item that we have is the organizational chart. Dr. Bornet, please.
Good evening again, school board. Uh, I would like to present with you again or circle back to a conversation we had at the beginning of the school year, um, probably back in mid-August regarding, um, the need to have a different structure at the administrative level for my, um, office. Um, so previously, the school board has approved two positions. One was the executive director of business operations. The other was the executive director of instructional services. Uh, when those positions were, um, recommended, uh, in the late fall, we did proceed to, um, interview, uh, for those positions. However, during the course of the school year, we've, uh, did not officially approve the organizational flow chart. And since then, we have had some changes in the organization, um, which prompts me to, um, submit a revised flow chart. So here you have, uh, my recommendations for the revised flow chart. It does reflect some changes in staffing, administrative staffing that we've had since the beginning of the school year. So the principals, once again, under this iteration, still report directly to me. Once again, the rationale behind that is allowing me to closely supervise them since I am new and determining their leadership capacity. Um, and I feel that that is best delegated to me at this time. What it does do is it allows me to, um, distribute the other senior directors to those other two roles. The executive director of business operations, um, was supervised, the director of instructional technology, the director of security and director of transportation. We are eliminating the director of facilities position and the buildings and ground manager will report to that executive director position. Um, it also allows me to go back to one of my original recommendations, which was to have an assistant superintendent, uh, which would be my executive officer or my number one. Um, and that person would pri- primarily be responsible for all the instructional side of the house. They would be responsible for supervising elementary education, social emotional learning, school improvement, special education and English learners, those departments and those directors. I've pulled out from the original draft, the director of human resources. I find that I am working very closely with the director of human resources as I, as I do with the director of athletics. And of course, the communications and public relations coordinator reports directly to me as well. Um, so those are the changes from an original flow chart and those are the ones we will be recommending. Um, questions from the board?
Is your, is your mic on?
Yeah, your mic.
Is your mic on?
My mic's not on.
So sorry, okay. So, um, nah, I'm just trying to, cause I came in late and I'm all discombobulated, okay? Uh, communications and public relations will go to?
They report directly to me as well.
Okay, superintendent, okay. All right, super. Okay, and direct, and executive director of business operation, that would be, that person would be in charge of building and ground manager, director of instructional technology and director of security and director of transportation.
Correct.
Okay, and then as secretary of what, that's you. Okay, got, thank you.
Dr. Bornet, so I'm assuming that the director, executive director of business operations would also be handling finance as well?
Correct. So that director of business operations will serve as the chief financial officer. You will also note that under that column, there is no director of food service.
Right.
That, that role is also folded into the executive director of business operations. Or that person's designee or delegate.
So they would directly be reporting executive director of business operations?
Correct. So if the, so the vision is each, the assistant superintendent will meet regularly with her cabinet or his or her cabinet, as will the executive director of business operations. And then those two will report up to me. So currently I meet with all twelve of those people at the cabinet meeting on a regular basis. We can, we will still have a need to meet with everyone, but we will meet weekly with just the assistant superintendent and the executive director of business operations.
Madam President.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Bornet, so would this, would this have to be approved first before you can actually engage in uh, proposals for the assistant superintendent in business operations or, I think you've done one already, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so, okay.
So the one you did was, uh, which one was you did already?
Executive director, right?
The executive director of business operations.
Okay. Yeah, it's posted, right, okay. So now you're gonna post assistant superintendent, or well, when we vote on?
When, when you.
And this will be on our, on our agenda for Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, I'm sorry, for clarif- clarifying purpose, the assistant superintendent is an existing administrative position. It's not a new position. I would just require that we post it internally so that we could quickly move forward with the leadership team.
Right, got it.
Oh, you said internally, in-house?
Correct.
Oh, you're gonna post it out-house, okay.
That is correct.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, um, are there any more questions from the board then?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Gomez.
I, I believe that the, um, board had had discussion and were, the sentiment seemed to be that we were, um, more comfortable with executive director positions, as opposed to assistant superintendent. I believe that we all, um, were in agreement on that. Just wanna make that comment. Secondly, what, what I find missing here is that, um, we do not have a director of secondary education. And, um, we had that position as well. And I believe that a lot of, that some of the success that we may have uh, received more recently was as a result of that individual, um, actively being involved, with the, uh, leadership team over at the high school. I still find that to be a gap in this chart.
So, trustee Gomez, what did you find a gap in?
There is no director of secondary education.
But the other part, I'm sorry. The last statement you made, a gap.
That it's missing here. There, there is no, there's no.
The secondary education you're talking about.
Yes.
Was there a reason for that, uh, Dr. Bornet?
Yes, if the board recalls, in the early fall, we talked about the assistant superintendent also having that double duty of being the executive director, sorry, being the director of secondary ed. That was, the rationale was behind it was not to create more administrative positions. However, if the board would like to have a specific role of directors of secondary ed in addition to this assistant superintendent, we can make the adjustment.
It was part, the director of sec- secondary education was part of the first organization flow chart, right?
Correct.
And this was, all this was discussed in the retreat that we went to, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then go back to, Mr. Gomez, his question was, we were not gonna have an assistant superintendent. We were just gonna have nothing, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right?
I'm sorry, Madam President, the conversation, as I recall, was that we were not gonna have assistant superintendents. Instead, we were to have executive directors.
Right, it was the executive directors. But now, Dr. Bornet, you're saying that you wanna change it to be an assistant superintendent. Okay, I'm just going back over some of the conversation that we did have while we were in exec session. And then, let's, let's us keep in mind that, um, whom did we have this retreat? Been a while, yeah. See, when we, when we, um, as a board, uh, this should have been done, you know? And, um, I know that has been brought up, you know, but it kept getting postponed and postponed for whatever reason. So I don't wanna find ourselves as a board postponing the chart again because it delays stuff, people in place. Uh, so it's very important to me that we ask all the right questions that we need to ask right now if, if, you know, but we could still ask them in the, when we have our meeting. But right now, we're just in discussion, you know, to ask questions about this and who's, so everybody that's under the assistant superintendent is, they're in charge, all these individuals that you have here.
That is correct.
And then, uh, you saying that if we wanna direct a secondary edu- do you, do you feel as though we need one?
I feel that the Assistant Superintendent, in the scope of supervising the elementary, social emotional learning, school improvement, et cetera, can still have the bandwidth to specifically support secondary in addition to that other, those other supervisory duties.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Gomez.
Yeah, I, I just want to reiterate my, or expand on my comment. It's not just a secondary, you know, we, we clearly have challenges at the elementary level.
Yes.
And, and I think that's putting a lot on one individual to manage the four elementary schools, social emotional learning, school improvement, special ed, which is a significant population here, as is a growing English language learner population growing. I, I think that's a lot to ask of someone. I, I, I really would like to see somebody focused solely on the grades outside of the elementary level, so the middle school and the high school.
So let me ask this question to you, Dr. Borne. The Director of Secondary Education, will there be any extended duties for that person to carry on? Or just only the secondary?
If we can, if, if it is the desire to fill that gap in the org chart, then that Director of Secondary Education can be assigned a number of other supervisory responsibilities to make sure that role is robust.
Now, now, what about some of these positions? Would it take in on some of these positions under the Assistant Superintendent?
If you allow me to sort of pivot and follow up with the board, about 24 to 48 hours to reflect on it, I can do that.
Yeah, because, yeah, I, I understand what Trustee Gomez is saying. Because we don't want to find ourselves lacking somewhere where we should have put this person over there. Like I said, this chart, you know, we, we're, we're trying to put it together right now for the better of our students. So you say we can, you can give us an answer about splitting up some of this?
Yes.
So Trustee, Trustee Gomez.
Madam President.
Yes. Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead. So I'm just trying to get understanding, okay, this chart right here is okay, fine. But you just feel like that secondary education should be as its own entity?
Madam President, if I could respond, I, I just feel that the, that is a gap in this middle row here. And if we could add a Director of, let's call it secondary, but really the middle school and the high school, I think that would help all around. Task one person, to me, it seems like to oversee all these populations is quite a bit. And to do secondary at the same time.
Madam President.
Yes, Trustee.
So currently, all of these roles under, according to the chart, that are falling under the Assistant Superintendent are currently right now under the Superintendent. In addition to all the other directors, so, I mean, that seems like a lot on one person. So I can understand how you would want to break this down the way you just did. And it's all focused on just instruction and learning, so that they will have a, just a direct focus on that area. So I, I really don't see a problem with this org chart. I think it's strategically formatted. With the exception of what they just brought up as far as the secondary education, but, I mean, I, I mean, your duties are split. And as you see fit, desire for the school district, so.
Yeah, and one more, because I was under the impression too, that we had got something back saying that there was not going to be a Director of Social Emotional Learning, but now there is.
Yeah, so the gap, I think part of the gap that addresses Trustee Gomez is some of the incidents, for example, that happened recently, where we do, we still see the need for a Director of Social Emotional Learning that addresses those behavior infractions that supports our deans, social workers and et cetera.
Okay, okay, all right. Any more questions from the board?
Madam President.
Yes, Trustee Rodriguez.
Yeah, I, I agree with Taylor, Trustee Taylor, with regards to Director of Secondary Education. She did, or it was mentioned that it seems like we do have a line allocation for Assistant Superintendent as well as secondary education. So if this just filling it, filling that box and putting a, a secondary education to it, I don't see a problem with that as well. Because it seems like the Assistant Superintendent is going to be handling more than just what we see here, probably. So, yeah, I don't see a problem with that as well.
Thank you, Rodriguez, Trustee Rodriguez. Okay, so the next, oh, you've got something, Trustee Smith?
No, no, not this, okay.
Okay, the next thing that we have here is the Superintendent's evaluation. Dr. Borne.
I think that's on you.
Oh, it is? Oh, is that on me? Oh.
In your, I'll walk.
Yes.
In your packet are a number of documents. The first document was previous, was previously shared with the School Board early December, when I was asked to complete my mid-year evaluation. That is the Indiana Superintendent Evaluation Guide. That document also contains the rubric, which I did turn in to the board in December, which was my self-evaluation. You also have in your packet a step-by-step process for the Superintendent Evaluation. And then you do have the actual rubric, which covers each of the domains and criteria for evaluating the superintendent. If I could ask our counsel to also elaborate on where the superintendent's performance goes as iterated in the contract connects with the Superintendent Evaluation.
Yes, that's part of the function of the board is to look at both of those documents to determine what that evaluation is going to look like. Typically, that is done in an executive session where, where we'll walk through each of those documents. I think it's important that you first gain an understanding of what is included in those documents, how they work. And then maybe in a second session, you come back and actually do the evaluation. I'd recommend that it be a two-step process because you've not used the documents before. You've not looked at the superintendent's contract in some time, and I think it would be helpful if we just did an overview of all that first. And then you come back prepared to actually do the work of performing the evaluation. So that'd be my recommendation.
Yes, I'm sorry, Dr. Borne. I thought that when you, when you handed this package, I forgot that this was made for me to do. Okay, and then too, I want to say that once we, once we do what we have to do as far as Dr. Borne's evaluation here, you all did receive his mid-year self-evaluation, which it looks like this. Yeah, and then we also have the goals that we had. We put these goals together, if I'm not mistaken. Were they put together at the retreat that we did, these goals here? Okay, so these are the goals that we need as well to add on to what we're going to put in the evaluation.
Yes.
Go ahead, Trustee Smith. Go ahead. Let me catch up. Does Trustee Taylor have? Yeah, I gave everybody this. Uh huh, I gave this to everybody when we was at the last meeting that, the last meeting that we had. Everybody got a copy of this right here. And as well as his update on some things here, we'll use this as well from July 11, 2025, the update I gave everybody too. So we can have something for Mercedes because you're new, you know, uh huh. Yeah, okay.
Madam President.
Yes.
If I can just clarify.
Yes.
So it seems like, it seems like we're, we're starting to develop the tools needed in order to do a Superintendent Evaluation.
Yes.
However, we're in the mid-part of the school year, so what we're looking at probably is sort of a a sort of a pre-evaluation.
Yes, they gave us a name at the, at the last meeting.
Madam President.
What was it called?
Formative.
What was it?
Formative.
Formative, formative. Yes, that's what we gave them, formative.
Yeah, just to see where we're at as far as being on track with, with the superintendent, as well as the board's goals and the superintendent's goals.
Right.
So I do appreciate, Madam President, that you are on top of it when it comes to sort of establishing the Superintendent Evaluation for the, for June, for the annuals. I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, yes, Trustee Smith, you had something to say? Did you have something to say, Trustee Smith?
No, I just said to Trustee Gomez, thank you. He had me printing out the wrong thing, but thank you.
Oh, yes, okay. And, okay, are there any more questions from the board?
And we are going to do this, and then we are going to come together. We're going to individually do it.
Yes.
Then we all got to come together and...
Yeah, we're going to discuss that.
Now we're going to do that.
Madam President, if I could just add on, I, I think we should do a board training for, for the tool itself so that we're all on the same page. And I know Trustee Taylor's new to the board, so I think she would benefit from that as well.
Okay, Trustee Smith, Gomez. Okay, before we, before we end, I'd like to read something from the Foundations of East Chicago about our high school scholarship, students attending a four-year college/university, or they can attend a two-year college trade program. It's very important that the application has already been available ever since December 16, 2024. And it's ending January 23, 2025. So that's kind of like close for our students to apply for the application process here. So I'm hoping that we do have some, some students have applied already, but there are many more to go. So I'm praying and hoping that we do get the, reach out and get the students that is available for these from the scholarships from the Foundation. And that concludes our work session. Now we begin to go into our executive session.